Welcome to the December 12th, 2022, meeting of the Sandusky City Commission. We're going to have an invocation offered by Commissioner Meinzler, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Bless us, Lord, and help us make the good decisions tonight. Got a full house. And disease is coming on us this time of year, flu, COVID. I hope everybody stays safe and has a happy holiday. And thank you for everything you've given us. Amen.
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 I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, boy.
Ms. Myers, you call the roll.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Waddington.
Here.
Mr. Harris.
Here.
Mr. Meinzler.
Here.
Mr. Poole.
Mr. Murray.
Here.
Mr. Brady.
Here.
Mr. Bajali.
Here.
They have a motion to excuse Commissioner Poole.
Second.
You've got a motion and a second discussion? Hearing no objection, that motion is approved. And that motion is approved, and Commissioner Poole is excused. Commissioners, you have before the minutes of our special meeting. No, we have before you the minutes of our meeting on November 28th. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Waddington.
I'm with you that we accept the minutes of the November 28th meeting and dispense with the formal reading.
Second. And a motion and a second discussion. No objection, the motion will be approved, and hearing no objection, that motion is approved. Any residents with comments regarding tonight's agenda items, I'd ask that you step to the podium, identify yourself, name an address, and share with us your agenda questions.
Sharon Johnson, 1139 Fifth Street. Tonight, you're passing quite a bit of chemicals for the water department. And I broke -- this came up on the Finance Committee, and a couple of commissioners were present. But I'd like to tell this to the rest of the commissioners. It was said, I'd like to have it taken off the consent items for discussion because there was a $400,000 increase from last year, and the chemicals are ordered annually. And so I looked further into some of this. And there's eight contracts here to be approved. And I wanted to know how many bids came in for each contract. Contract number one, three bids. Contract number two, four bids. Contract three, four bids. Contract four had two bids. Contract five had two bids. Contract six had two bids. Contract seven and eight had one bid each. And it also stated that we're ordering chemicals for Erie County and the city of Huron, if I'm understanding this right, what I read. So -- and they're supposed to be under their own contracts. So I have the following questions on this. Number one, how can other entities be under their own contract when the city is doing the ordering and we have them under contract? How is the inflationary cost passed on to the other entities? And if the city is the buyer of these contracts, these chemicals, why not have Huron and the county under contract? The city have these people under contract? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Ms. Johnson, what was the consent agenda item that you wanted pulled?
The chemicals for the water plant.
Hey.
Under consent items, I want to pull this.
All of them? Oh, no, okay, never mind. Never mind.
Any additional comments from residents on agenda items?
Thank you, Mr. President. Tim Schwanger, 362 Sheffield Way, Sandusky. My first two questions are under the consent items. Item E, which is the 2022 CDBG street servicing program, an increase of $4,500 over the original contract, maybe an explanation on that. Consent item H, which is the transportation agreement with Disability Board of Erie County. This looks like in 2023, and again, this came from the Finance Committee, it looks like 2023, the transit system's going to be $600,000 in the red. So maybe we can get some more contracts, outside contracts for that. Under item number five, which is the 2022 local street reservicing program, an increase of $140,000 over the original agreement. As a sidebar question, we noticed that East Water Street from Sausage Brew Works to Padlin Climb was paved in 2022. And that did not appear on the original list for streets to be paved in 2022. I might be mistaken. Maybe somebody can correct me on that if I am. I appreciate it. And the last item is number eight, which is the CDBG money for the 2021 demolition of property at $23,500. If the question is, if CDBG money is being paid for those demolitions, why are there liens being placed on those properties for demolition and also for asbestos removal? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schwanger. Additional comments from the public regarding agenda items? We'll attempt to answer those questions as pieces of legislation come before us. We have the privilege tonight of swearing in two new firefighters. Mr. Orzak, I wonder if you would perform that ceremony for us, and perhaps followed by Chief Diamikos.
I, Noah Maseros, recognizing my fundamental duty as a firefighter of the City of Sandusky Fire Department, I solemnly swear to uphold the standards of my profession by safeguarding the lives and property of our citizens against the threat of fire and disaster.
I, Noah Maseros, recognize my fundamental duty as a firefighter of the City of Sandusky Fire Department, do solemnly swear to uphold the standards of my profession by safeguarding the lives and property of our citizens against the threat of fire and disaster.
I promise to obey the duly constituted laws of the United States of America, the state of Ohio, and the city of Sandusky, and to accept the badge of my office as a symbol of public faith, leadership, and trust to be honored for as long as I remain firefighter of the City of Sandusky Fire.
I promise to obey the duly constituted laws of the United States of America, the state of Ohio, the city of Sandusky, and to accept the badge of my office as a symbol of public faith, leadership, and trust to be honored for as long as I remain a firefighter of the City of Sandusky Fire Department.
I will continually strive to serve our community and to be an influence for good before my fellow officers and firefighters to the best of my ability, so help me.
I will continually strive to serve our community and to be an influence for good before my fellow officers and firefighters to the best of my ability, so help me.
Congratulations.
Through you, Commissioner Brady, to the commission. Noah currently lives in Fairview. He studied exercise science in college prior to changing career paths and wanting to become a firefighter. He has his 240-hour fire certification. He's a certified EMT. And he starts -- he's scheduled to start paramedic school in January. Noah's assigned a number-two shift under the direction of Captain Matt Lesh. Congratulations, Noah, and welcome to the City of Sandusky.
Reach your right hand. I, Edward Simon, recognizing my fundamental duty as a firefighter of the City of Sandusky Fire Department, who solemnly swear to uphold the standards of my profession by safeguarding the lives and property of our citizens against the threat of fire and disaster.
I, Edward Simon, recognize my fundamental duty as a firefighter of the City of Sandusky Fire Department, who solemnly swear to uphold the standards of my profession by safeguarding the lives and property of our citizens against the threat of fire and disaster.
I promise to obey the duly constituted laws of the United States of America, the state of Ohio, the city of Sandusky, and to accept the badge of my office as a symbol of public faith, leadership, and trust to be honored for as long as I remain a firefighter of the City of Sandusky Fire Department.
I promise to obey the duly constituted laws of the United States of America, the state of Ohio, the city of Sandusky, and to accept the badge of my office as a symbol of public faith, leadership, and trust to be honored as for as long as I remain a firefighter of the City of Sandusky Fire Department.
I will continually strive to serve our community and to be an influence for good before my fellow officers and firefighters to the best of my ability, so help me.
I will continually strive to serve our community and to be an influence for good before my fellow officers and firefighters to the best of my ability, so help me. Congratulations. Thank you.
Through you, President Brady, to the commission. Edward is a Norwalk resident. Prior to becoming a firefighter, Edward was in the United States Navy. Currently, he's a corpsman in the Navy Reserves. He has his 240-hour fire certification. He's a certified EMT, and he's currently enrolled in paramedic school at E. Hovey. Edward is assigned a number-three shift under the direction of Captain James Green. Congratulations, Edward.
Chief, I wonder if it might be interesting for all of us to know who the people were that pinned both firefighters?
Edward had his mother pin his badge on him, and Noah had his uncle, who is a lieutenant for the Cleveland Fire Department, pin his badge on him.
Wow, nice. Thank you. Thanks to both of you for, ma'am, for delivering your son to us, number one, and this gentleman for his service. You have very distinguished markings on your uniform, so I can tell you've been through the battle. Thank you. We have a public hearing on the 2023 budget that will be conducted by our Finance Director, Michelle Reader. And as this is a public hearing, we will entertain questions or comments from the public as well as the commission. We'll give them a minute. Okay, Ms. Reader.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner President Brady, and to all the commissioners and the public. It's time for the 2023 budget. I know we went over this at Finance Committee on Friday, so this is a review for some people. But as you have questions, feel free to interrupt me. I'm happy to entertain any questions as we go through this presentation. As a reminder, the 2023 budget per our city charter cannot be passed until the first meeting in January, which would be the January 9th, 2023 meeting. By ORC, this can be held off and not passed. It has to be passed by the end of March. So we do have some time to get this budget passed. But it's the intention to have this on for first reading tonight, and then it would come back for the first meeting in January for passage. The 2023 budget overview. This slide has some highlights of what you'll see in the 2023 budget. There's over 2,000 lines in this budget, so this is just meant to be an overview. We, of course, are not going to touch on every single line. But I'm happy to meet with anybody and go over the budget with any questions or comments that you may have. This budget includes contractual wage increases of 2.5% for our police, fire, and ASME, because they are union members. The administration, this budget will show a 3% raise increase for administrative employees. That legislation will be in front of commission at the next meeting on December 21st for passage. But at this moment, the budget does include that 3% for administrative employees. The budget also shows an increase in police force with five new officers budgeted. That is due to the new Cedar Point partnership, where we'll be handling the police forces over there at the park. We do have an agreement in place where we get reimbursed from Cedar Point for those five new officers. This also has an increase of the two new officers that you just saw, plus we had one earlier in November that got them up to 48 full-time firefighters. So they are all included in the budget for 2023. You'll see a health insurance increase in the 2023 budget. It's a 22% of an increase right now. As a note, in 2021, our claims for health insurance hit $4 million. As of the end of November, our health insurance claims already hit $5.6 million. So the city is self-insured. We do have some stopgap measures in place, such as reinsurance. But at this point, we are still at $5.6 million in claims for health insurance. The Parks and Public Realm Division is a new division for 2023. That account number is 110-3300. That will have the expenses for our grounds, greenhouse, and public realm divisions. Our horticulture division, which is the 110-4850, that department used to house all of those expenses for grounds, greenhouse, and public realm, and also our forestry. Moving forward for next year's budget, we are splitting those out. So you'll see that the 110-3300 accounts have no history because there are new accounts for 2023. And you'll see a decline in the expenses in the 110-4850 accounts because they're losing three different departments within that accounting number. You'll see inflation pressures on this budget. As we all know, the cost of supplies, in front of you tonight, you'll have a dispatching contract, which also has increased, as noted. The chemicals are seeing an increase, and just general services are rising in 2023. So we have to budget to account for that. The American Rescue Plan funds, the stimulus funds, as we commonly refer to them, we have about $12 million of cash that has been unspent in those funds. So we're still working through the capital plan. The intent is to be back in front of the Finance Committee and the City Commission in February of 2023 with a capital plan. The revenue figures that you'll see in this budget are conservative. So this is a slide of the general fund revenue. If we go back to 2014, we had $16.3 million in general fund revenue. You'll see that that has climbed substantially. Right now, in 2022, at the end of November, we had $31.3 million. That is, of course, due to the emissions tax and parking tax that we are now increased to 8%. And then next year, as I said, the numbers are going to be conservative. We're budgeting $29.3 million in revenue for 2023. This is the breakdown of the revenue and how that $29.3 million is going to be broken down in for revenue. The biggest slice of the pie is going to be your income tax dollars. Nearly $12 million is expected to be reseeded in income taxes in 2023, which is about 41% of the general fund budget. Emissions tax is a light blue piece there, $8.4 million, which equates to about 28% of the budget. Departmental revenue is the yellow piece there. It's nearly $3 million. Departmental revenue will be mostly your police revenue, your fire revenue, and also your immunity court revenue comes into that category. Property taxes is about another $1.7 million in general fund revenue. You'll also see the lodging tax, $1.7 million. Local government funds is about $850,000. We also have interest earnings that are starting to see an increase. We're very conservatively sitting at $665,000 in estimated earning revenue next year. The light blue piece there is miscellaneous. And then the yellow piece on the middle there is the parking tax, which is budgeted to be $550,000 next year, which is about 2% of the entire general fund revenue. Moving on to the proposed budget expenditures, this slide shows where we were for 2020, 2021, where we're at currently, and also what the budget was for 2022. And the far-right column displays the 2023 budget. This has every single fund in it, fund in it. The first fund being the general fund, the one we talk a lot about. So that $29.3 million is just under what we expect in revenue next year. And again, the revenue number is conservative. As we go through, every single one of these funds is listed on here. As we stated before, capital projects will be back with a capital plan of where those dollars will be spent. Water, sewer, we have all those funds. And that's another fund that we monitor on a regular basis as that fund is vital for our services for the city to make sure we're -- can provide the services. And revenue is coming in where we need it to continue for those water and sewer projects that we will have. All in for the 2023 budget in the far-right column, all funds is just under $90 million in expenditures next year. You can see in the 2022 budget, we're at $113 million, which we're not going to hit. But the budget is there because we do have the cash available to spend if needed. The general fund budget of the $29.3 million that we have in the budget, this slide breaks down what department receives, how much money, and the percentage as a total of the general fund. Largest expenditures are going to be the police department and the fire department, really similar, about $5.1 or $5.2 million for those two departments. And at the very bottom, you'll see the administrative support, about $10.6 million, and that's due to transfers. So all the money that we take in, in the revenue side of the general fund for admissions tax, income tax, any issue $8, they initially come through the general fund as revenue. And then we have to expend them out of the general fund as an expense, and they go to the capital fund. This is a breakdown of the number of full-time employees that we have by department. Going back to 2021, we had 240 full-time employees. 2022, we had in the budget 248 employees. Next year, the budget will be up to 257 employees. Again, the largest increases are going to be your police department with the five new officers for the Cedar Point agreement. And then our fire department, with that fact-finding report that we had, we increased the fire personnel to 48, plus we have a chief and a fire marshal in that budget. I guess I could note where I stated before, like the horticulture, forestry division, you'll see a decrease there. But you'll see the increase in the employees on the Parks and Public Realm piece. This slide shows our budgeted general fund transfers. As I stated before, all of our promises that we have, whether it is from the new admissions tax and parking tax or previously from issue eight, this slide shows the 2022 amounts in the dark blue color. And 2023 shows in light blue what the budget shows for next year. There's not too many large differences until you get to the admissions and parking tax. And that's obviously because this year was the first year of the increase. They sold a lot of passes in 2021, prior to that increase coming into play. So next year, we expect $4.5 million from new admissions and parking tax dollars to be transferred over to the general fund to be spent on capital projects. Here's the historical general fund expenses and cash balance. The bar graphs will show the estimated expenditures for next year. Like I've shown before, in the revenue side in 2014, we're considerably a lot less. That was before the issue eight promise came into effect. When we're looking at the revenue in 2022, I'm sorry, the expenditures in 2022, we have $32.3 million estimated that we could spend this year. And then next year, we're still just under $30 million for expenditures. The wave behind there, that dark blue line, that shows the cash balance, we estimate next year to be about a $6 million cash balance in the general fund. That targets to be a 20% reserve in the general fund. And that is all I have. I'm happy to take any comments or questions that anybody may have.
Because this is a public hearing, we'll take any comments or questions from the public. Ms. Johnson, step to the podium, please. And if you'll give us your name and address, we'll put it in the record.
Did I see where you had $5.6 million that was spent in the health insurance claims?
Insurance claims.
Is that kind of high?
Yes.
What are we doing to keep that down? I mean, keep this stuff under control?
Health insurance claims, as we all know, if you don't mind. Yeah. So through the Commissioner President. So health insurance claims, we are self-funded. So as employees and dependents have claims, we have to pay them. We have looked at network, you know, make sure we're in the best network. We have a stop-loss that caps our expense, city's expense, at $150,000 for most employees. We do have some employees that are what we call lasered out. They can't, you know, fit under that category for one reason or another. But we work with the Ashley Group, which is now One Digital, with our health insurance. We have monthly reports that we're looking at it. Unfortunately, I'm not sure that the city can completely control health insurance because I'm sure, just like at your house and everyone else's house, when you need healthcare, you've got to have healthcare. So we have healthcare in place for our employees and their dependents. And as claims come in, we have to pay them. We do have a contractual agreement with the police department and also the ASME members, where we are doing a cost-sharing measure on the health insurance premiums that started in 2023. We also applied that to the administrative employees. So we are doing what we can to control our side and get contributions from the employees. But unfortunately, health insurance is one of those claims that in 2022 was a bad year. I'm expecting, hoping that 2023 isn't so bad. But there's definitely no guarantee on that.
Okay. I just wanted to add one more thing on this. For the spouses of the employees, a long time ago, they had that. And the city's still in this mode. But most of the companies, if the spouse is working, they go on their own insurance, and they get off, except for the dependents, the children, they're under the father and mother's insurance. But for the spouses who have a job, they're off the contract. Are we looking at something like that, or what?
Through the Commissioner President to Ms. Johnson again, we absolutely have looked at that multiple times. There's no guaranteed cost-saving. I know the theory of one less person on our insurance. The liability is not there. We've looked at even, you know, doing an incentive to offer employees an incentive to get off of our health insurance. But unfortunately, sometimes you lose the healthy bodies by doing those measures, which actually ends up hurting our pool in general. So there's no guarantee. But yes, we have looked at a multitude of options trying to reduce health insurance.
Okay, thank you.
Additional comments or questions in the audience?
Thank you, Mr. President. Tim Schwanger, 362 Sheffield Way. Some of the older commissioners here might remember an organization called Borma. I think it was, you know, group insurance, so we can get a cheaper rate. It might be that time to consider going back to something of that, you know, effect since prices are escalating. Number two, is there, can anybody give me an idea what the advantage is of separating grounds maintenance, the greenhouse, and public realm out of the way it's been set up for, like, forever? Is there an advantage to that?
Through the Commissioner President, I can answer that. So those divisions are so similar, and they do the same duties. So it was best to combine them. So grounds and greenhouse take care of Washington Park together, along with things that are going on at the pier. So public realm takes care of that. So that account number combines all those services. And we have one number to say this is what we have spent on grounds, greenhouse, and public realm maintenance.
Okay. So therefore, then they can all three communicate with one another, too, so that there's no issue of, well, that's not, you know, that's not my realm, that's somebody else's realm. So they all kind of take care of all three of those, all the employees together? Gotcha. And then under the capital budget, which I know we don't have that yet, but they've been working on it, is the widening of the Cedar Point Causeway considered our capital improvement project? Or is that something that's not going to be within the capital budget when that comes before commission in 2023, in February?
Through the Commissioner President. So yes, we are working on the capital project. That agreement for Cedar Point Causeway, we do not have agreement in place for that project. It will not be a city-run project at this time. So it would be an agreement we have in place to spend X dollars or give them a set amount.
Okay. So that would not be counted as a capital budget? Okay, so that would not be counted as a capital budget?
It will be listed in there because it's capital dollars that are being spent from the city, but not, we will not manage that project.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
If I may, a couple random thoughts. Number one, not only will we not manage that project for the Cedar Point Causeway expansion, but our commitment through the MOU that we signed, I don't know, what was it, about a year ago, limits our contribution, so we have to make a set contribution. We're not exposed if costs increase. So that's, it is a capital expenditure in that regard. It's the only way it can be accounted for. Couple other random thoughts. Number one, it's very interesting to see the admissions tax now that it's the size that it is, and then compare that with the income tax. We have an income tax in the city of 1.25%. To have the same revenue, we would require, be required to have an income tax of 2.25%, which is higher than the state average. The state average, the last time I looked at it, was pushing about 1.85% as an average municipal income tax. So it's a tremendous boon to our budget and to our residents that we're able to have that level of government services without having to tax the individual residents to that extent. I know I had some other thoughts, but I had them up, I forgot a pen, so I didn't make notes.
Perhaps I can help you. I think perhaps you and I have been around long enough, as like Commissioner Waddington, to speak to the concept of belonging to a pool in healthcare. That did not work very well for us, and we were, we have benefited monetarily greatly since we've separated ourselves from that pool. It turned out, after years of being in that pool, that the city of Sandusky was actually subsidizing so many other smaller communities. When we broke from that, we had almost instant financial success with that. What we're looking at this year is a year where health just wasn't too good, you know, for our employees or for spouses or for dependents. That's going to swing like a pendulum. When you're self-insured, you're going to have good years, you're going to have bad years. Well, guess what? We got a bad year this year, and I think if most of you live long enough, that will average itself out, and it will turn out to be the self-funding and staying out of pools where you really don't know who's carrying the water, carrying the burden, I think will turn out to be the smart thing to do.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
That was, it was along those lines, and I wanted to also add that I am seeing generally increases in health insurance costs on the order of 20% through just a host of employers. And I don't know if it's long COVID, or if it's semi-optional procedures that people delayed because of COVID. I don't, I mean, I've heard both those explanations. I don't know what all it is, but our experience, the city of Sandusky's experience, I think is not dissimilar to what many institutions are seeing right now.
True. Additional comments?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to mention that I had the occasion to attend the finance meeting last Friday. I thought Mr. Waddington was going to be there, but I guess he slept in that day, but I, I just wanted to say, I was so impressed with Michelle's presentation. I mean, it was excellent, and she did a great job answering questions, so I just wanted to note that.
Thank you. Additional comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Meiser.
Let's say, nice job. I got the draft, went through that, and very good.
Thank you.
Good job.
Commissioner Meiser.
Ms. Reader, Mrs. Reader, do you have off the top of your head what a family plan and a single plan is?
The city's contribution for a single plan is $7,800 annually, and the family plan is $22,000, like $200, I believe, and that's our funding factor.
Okay. I mean, I remember we brought up Borma and Gallagher Basset, and several years ago, it was approaching $33,000 a year for a family plan. So obviously, even we're budgeting $22,000, that's $10,000, you know, per family, less than, what, 210 employees?
We have about 200, and say, next year's 257, but right now, not all of those take health insurance either. We do have a handful that.
That's pretty significant savings, yeah.
Additional comments or questions, Commissioners? If not, I will declare this public hearing closed. Thank you, Ms. Reader.
Thank you.
Commissioners, you have before you several communication from staff recommending various pieces of legislation, and have a motion to accept these communications.
So move.
Second.
And a motion and a second? No objection, that motion be approved, and hearing no objection, that motion is approved. Commissioners, we have eight items on the consent agenda this evening. I'd like to remind you that you do not, you certainly have the option of removing items from the consent agenda and putting them on the regular agenda, but that is not necessary to simply discuss an item on the consent agenda. That discussion of a consent agenda item can take place without it being moved to the regular agenda. Therefore, any of you wish to move items from the consent agenda to the regular agenda, please let me know that. Ms. Meyers, you present the consent agenda.
Yes, Mr. President. Item A, 2023 chemical contracts for Big Island Water Treatment Plant and for the wastewater treatment plant. Item B, submerged lands lease for 727 Cedar Point Road. Item C, Ohio EPA annual discharge fee for the wastewater treatment plant, calendar year 2022. Item D, Ohio EPA license to operate fee for Big Island Waste Water Treatment Plant, calendar year 2023. Item E, 2022 CDBG Street Rehabilitation Project Change Order I and Final. Item F, permanent utility easement over Jackson Street Parking Lot. Item G, agreement with Energy Harbor for street lighting. Item H, STS 2023 Transportation Services Agreement with ECBDD.
Commissioners, having heard these ordinances and resolutions, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Meiser.
I move to adopt the ordinance on the consent agenda, items 1 through 8, in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Would that be items A through H?
Oh, yes.
Okay. We'll amend that motion to reflect A through H. Thank you, Mr. Meiser. Is there a second to that?
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Meiser.
This takes me back to every time we do the charter review, we're only allowed to spend $10,000 a year, and this is something that at least we have the consent agenda. I know some people want to know all the details of these chemicals, but I feel that we have qualified engineers, we have qualified staff in engineering department, we have qualified financial people with staff in the finance office, we have state auditors coming to check everything, trust me, and we have 200, how many employees? They're just waiting to blow the whistle and somebody just screw up. So I feel confident that these numbers are correct, and that the cost of things going up and supply chains, I'm pretty.
Thank you, Commissioner Meiser. I always felt that the move to the consent agenda was specifically for item A, so that our clerk did not have to try to pronounce the names of these chemicals. So that might have been the impetus for it, and a few other things. I would like to comment on item A because I was able to respond at the Finance Committee with a question that was asked was, did we get competitive bids on these chemicals? Mr. Klein has assured me that we have competitive bids. I think it was pointed out that the last couple of items, we only received one bid. Hey, guess what? That's life. That's what happens in the real world. It's what happens in government. Sometimes there's supply chain interruptions, there's only one company that makes it, only one company that's willing to sell it to you. That's what happens. Between two and five quotes were received, I believe, on the majority of these. Again, as Commissioner Meiser had mentioned, we take this very seriously. We're not giving anybody a free pass on selling us this amount of chemicals at this amount of dollars. I believe it's about a $400,000 increase year over year. Again, one of those things totally out of our control. We're going to have a sewer plant, we're going to have a water plant, you're going to buy chemicals for it. Question was raised, and I will leave this question to be answered by, I think I know what the answer is, but I, probably better to hear from a real expert on the question of why we are purchasing chemicals to resell to other entities. Mr. Klein.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. We don't actually purchase chemicals. We simply do the bidding on their behalf, similar to how the county bids the salt contract for the city of Sandusky and other municipalities in the region. We do that on the chemical side of things. It's just a way of sharing those responsibilities. They would have to bid out the same things. Now, when we receive the bids, we then send the bids on to each of those other entities that have those treatment facilities, and then they enter into separate contracts and they make the decisions on who they're dealing with. So these contracts that you would be voting on tonight are strictly for chemicals for Big Island Water Works or the Water Pollution Control Facility in Sandusky. None of these chemicals would go elsewhere.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. I believe there was also a question on item E regarding some, is that some CDBG issue? Anyone recall what that question was? I just put a question mark next to it. Mr. Klein.
Yes, Mr. President. It was about East Water Street being done. Public Works Engineer is here in case there are additional questions, but what happened was is Columbia Gas was doing work in one of the streets that we had intended to resurface, and obviously, we couldn't do that while they were tearing it up. So we added East Water Street in lieu of that one, with the anticipation of the East Water Street portion from Franklin East to Megs being done next year, and that will take care of all of East Water Street, and we won't have that two-block section after next year. So that one was just a replacement street. It wasn't on the original list. It was a replacement street because Columbia Gas was doing, I believe it was Decatur, but I keep, I think I keep saying Decatur and getting it wrong.
Mr. Snyder, do you have something to add to that?
Certainly. Yeah, so Aaron was mostly right.
He mostly is.
Yeah, he usually is mostly right. So Columbia Gas came in after we bid the project, and the list was already developed, and did five blocks of Jackson Street. So in lieu of those five blocks, we chose two blocks of East Water, two blocks of Third Street, and a block of Smith Street. Third and, I'm sorry, Smith and East Water, we couldn't find records of those being paved back to 1970. And then Third Street was paved in 1989, but nonetheless, all those areas needed it, and so we opted to do other streets in place of Jackson Street.
Thank you, Snyder. Good, I think that's great stewardship on the part of the Engineering Department. You know, you folks do that so often that we come to expect that now, and I guess that's a good thing, but our kudos to you folks for being proactive on stuff like that. Additional comments or questions on consent agenda items?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
I did talk a little bit with Mr. Klein today about the increases in the water and sewer chemical, those costs, and he shared with me that some of it's due to supply chain, some of it's due to the fact that these chemicals that we need are not always manufactured in the United States, and so we're dealing with overseas shipping costs, the costs of rail, and truck have gone up significantly, so it's all of these factors. But you know, when you take a look at this, there are about nine, I can't remember, I think about 9,000 to 11,000 households in Sandusky. I've forgotten what the number is offhand, but that's about $40 per household increase, or $3.50 a month. We did a rate study some years ago, and it was painful, and the commission itself had been derelict for a long period of time in not dealing with the fact that the water and sewer funds are running out of money, and we didn't have money to do what we needed to do, and all of a sudden, we had to have a massive series of increases. Water and sewer rates are increasing around the country. It is something that every community has to deal with. It's something that the elected officials hate dealing with because the residents don't want to have their water and sewer rates increased. I understand that. My brother was on my case just the other day. He wanted to know why his water bill had doubled, and he went back and he found out that he hadn't paid the prior month. So at least we explained that particular instance. But we, I understand Mr. Klein has a rate study planned for 2023. Don't be surprised if a year from now, we're talking about increasing water rates. We're going to have to. That's just our, that's our fiscal responsibility to make sure that the water and sewer rates and systems are fully funded going forward, and we can't leave it to another commission to deal with this when we run out of money.
Ms. Meyers, will you call a roll on the motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meiser?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
And now on the ordinances and resolutions.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meiser?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Those ordinances and resolutions are passed. Turn to our regular agenda. Ms. Meyers, you present item number one, please.
Item one, it is requested an ordinance be passed making general appropriations for the fiscal year 2023.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
I move to approve the ordinance.
Second.
Then a motion and a second discussion. If this is a first reading, we will, we will have a vote on that motion.
Mr. Chairman. Let's simply note that Ms. Reader has available a very detailed 2,000 line-by-line explanation. You can go through it. She has a lot of annotations in terms of why something increased or why something decreased. It's a very valuable exercise. I went through that, then sat down with Ms. Reader to get some additional information. I encourage anyone who's interested in doing the same. I've said before that as an elected official, if you have a grasp around the budget, you'll have a grasp around a local government. If you don't, the budget's going to control you, and you'll be whipsawed. So really encourage to sit down and take a look at that hard.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Additional discussion. Ms. Meyers, will you call the roll on that motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meiser?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meiser?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed on first reading, and we'll come back to us. Ms. Meyers, you present item number two, please.
Item two, it is requested an ordinance be passed adopting Amendment Number Eight to Ordinance 22-004, passed by this city commission on January 10, 2022, making general appropriations for the fiscal year 2022, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Then a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Meyers, you call a roll on that motion.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meiser?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meiser?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Meyers, you present item number three, please.
Yes, Mr. President. It is requested a resolution be passed amending Resolution Number 042-22, passed on August 8, 2022, authorizing and directing the city manager to file an application with the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency for a loan through the Water Pollution Control Loan Fund Program for the design, construction, and inspection of the Mills Street High Rate Treatment Project, and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this resolution, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Harris.
I move for the adoption of this resolution or suspension of rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Then a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Meyers, you call a roll on that motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meiser?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
And now on the resolution.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
That resolution is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number four, please.
Yes, Mr. President. It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an agreement with the Grotz of Cleaning Solutions Incorporated of Sandusky, Ohio, for cleaning services at City Hall 240 Columbus Avenue and the Justice Center 222 Megs Street and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner.
I move that we adopt this ordinance under full accordance with section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, you call a roll on that motion.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Ms. Myers, you present, that ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number five, please.
Yes, Mr. President. It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to approve the first and final change order for work performed by Precision Paving Incorporated of Mylan, Ohio, for the 2022 local street resurfacing project in the amount of $139,717.32 and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner.
I would move to adopt this ordinance under section 14 of the city charter. Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner.
I know we usually don't care for change orders, but this was a contingency that was budgeted within the street capital fund system.
That is correct. Mr. Snyder, can you add some light to the change order that we're providing dollars for?
Sure. Through you, Commission President. So the change order of almost $140,000, the bulk of that was due to full-depth work that, repairs that needed to be done on pavements caused by water main breaks. And so Mr. Murray brought to my attention, actually, the first bullet on the communication lists, West Washington and West Market, which obviously do not intersect. There was a large main break at West Market and Shelby Street, though, that undermined brick pavement, sand, there was sand subgrade underneath that. And so we had to have a contractor excavate exceptionally in that area. That was one of, one of the repairs made. And then there were three breaks on Cedar Point Drive. One was near the northernmost bridge, and the other one was just prior to the tollbooths, and then one just inside the parking lot. And those repairs were made timely for one of the last hollow weekends. And so because of those emergency repairs, that all added up to almost $75,000 of this $140,000 change order. The other $65,000 can be attributed to repairs, extensive repairs that needed to be performed on catch basins, manholes, and then purely the number of manholes and catch basins that needed adjusted versus my initial estimate. So there was an increase in those. So a lot of it was a variance in quantity from what was actually performed with what, versus what was estimated to be performed. And those are the water and sewer items as well.
Thank you, Mr. Snyder. And as Commissioner Myers pointed out, we have contingency money here that this more than covers. And I think it's, I think it's important to point out, and I have, I think, over the years, but I will again, that we don't, we don't just give this additional work to the successful contractor on a, on a cost-plus basis. We, we get per-unit cost when they bid the job so that if things run over, things run under, we, we can be treated fairly. So we are entering into those contracts with eyes wide open. And again, no one likes writing change orders for $139,000, but it is, it is well within the parameters of what something like that should be. Typically, I expect something approaching 9%, 10%, and this is less than that. But again, good, good job. Additional comments, Commissioners? Ms. Myers, you call a roll on that motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number six, please.
Yes, Mr. President. It is requested an ordinance be passed declaring a 1991 Roscoe Compact 460 Static Roller is unnecessary and unfit for use pursuant to section 25 of the city charter, authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a contract for purchase of a used vibratory roller at public auction for the Streets and Traffic Division at an amount not to exceed $35,000 and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Klein, before we get all happy about getting a new roller, you fill in the blanks on why we're not getting this roller.
Yes, sir. Mr. President, a couple months ago, we found a really good deal on a used roller online that had very few hours on it, but we were, we didn't have the ability to move fast enough because we didn't have an ordinance and somebody purchased it out from under us. So now we're looking at just having this ordinance in place so that we can move quickly when we do find a unit that, that meets the needs and desires and is of the same quality that what we found previously.
I'm certainly good with that. The need is established and the need is there. And if this commission is willing to approve these kind of funds, confident that you will be good stewards of the dollars and find us another acceptable roller out there. Additional comments or questions, Commissioners? Ms. Myers, you poll the commission on that motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number seven, please.
Yes, Mr. President. It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to purchase a 2024 Freightliner M2 106 two-ton truck from Valley Freightliner Sterling and Western Star Incorporated of Parma, Ohio, through the State of Ohio Department of Transportation Cooperative Purchasing Program for the Sewer Maintenance Division and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Klein, perhaps you can speak for Mr. Cromer, but we, we have, we passed this ordinance tonight and to purchase this truck, how long are we going to wait?
Unfortunately, Mr. President, we have to place the order before the end of 2022 to get a 2024 truck. So this is something that, looking ahead, that's, existing equipment would be seven, eight years old by the time we would actually get this one. And those take some, in the sewer department, they take a beating pretty quickly. So unfortunately, we have to look that far ahead now to place these orders.
Well, if we don't need it now, we'll probably need it by then, for sure. Wow, that's something. Here. Additional comments or questions? Ms. Myers, you poll the commission on that motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number eight, please.
Yes, Mr. President. It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a contract with Ed Burdo and Company of Sandusky, Ohio, for the CDBG Fiscal Year 21 Demolition Project Number Four and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what's your pleasure?
Don't run out of gas on me.
Close, Commissioner, only one left. Mr. Meinter?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance in full accordance with section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner.
I believe there was a question about whether it's appropriate to place a lien on the properties when we're using CDBG money. I know Ms. Groey is in the audience, and I wonder if she might be able to take it, run it to a particular question. I would have thought that was normal and ordinary, but maybe not.
Through the Commission President, I am really unsure where that language originated from. It was in place prior to me being employed with the city. So I can research into that and get back to the Commission, but it's not something I have an answer to at this time.
Great. We didn't mean to put you on the spot with that. We all, we all do that from time to time. And normally, with a lien question, I would turn to Mr. Hile. And maybe, maybe I should still turn to Mr. Hile.
I can answer the question of if you can place a lien on a demoed property that you use CDBG funds, the answer to that is yes. And then if the lien gets repaid, I believe it gets credited to program income and then gets cycled back through the CDBG program to be used for, for other things. Whether that happens on these specific properties, I don't know the answer to that.
Okay. Ms. Groey, I consider you completely off the hook.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I had a, I had a question for Ms. Groey. I noticed that the cost for the asbestos abatement was $23.5.
And demolition.
Oh, that includes, okay. Then you answer my question.
Yeah. Yeah, I thought for asbestos.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Murray?
I would note that although we keenly place these liens on these properties as we should, should there be something valuable come out of the property when it's sold, I have to believe that the overwhelming majority of these liens are never satisfied to any meaningful extent. I don't know if anybody has an answer to that question, but usually these properties are, if they're demoed, there isn't a lot left to the land property. And when land, when the land is sold, it's usually pursuant to a tax foreclosure, and our liens fall to the back end of that. And so they just get extinguished and they don't get paid typically. I don't know, Mr. Hile, if you have a different perspective.
Through the Commission President, anecdotally, the most oftentimes office runs into a demolition lien, whether it be however the demolition was paid for or occurred, it is in tax foreclosure situation. And that usually has a lower priority than the taxes and other things. So if we recoup the money on the, in the tax foreclosure process, is, it's rare. But that is just anecdotal. So I don't, I don't have any data to back that up.
Thank you. Ms. Myers, you call a roll on the motion.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present our last item, number nine.
Yes, Mr. President. It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a contract with the Erie County Sheriff for the provision of public safety dispatching services for the City of Sandusky Police Department, Fire, and Service Departments commencing on January 1, 2023 through December 31, 2023, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Murray?
We had a little back and forth with the county about the increase in the costs here relative to what an initial draft showed, and we got some good answers back. Mr. Sulloway pointed out that 2009, the city spent approximately $750,000 on dispatch services. That would be well over a million dollars today. This continues to be a good deal for our residents, for all of the residents of Erie County. The county's also made some significant investments in equipment, which we would have had to have done had we continued to maintain the system. So this has been a good deal. I'm glad we're still doing it.
Additional comments or questions, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner.
This goes back to my comments from last week when we were talking about the police dispatch. Now, I just, I hate to put you in a spot, I don't know who to answer, probably one chief or chief, but how many PSAPs are in the county now?
Through you, Commission President, Commissioner Meinter, there's three PSAPs. There's one in North Central. There was one at Cedar Point, which is being discontinued, and there's one at the sheriff's office. So there'll ultimately be two at this time next year.
So North Central is the backup?
No, North Central still dispatches for Mylan Fire and maybe Berlin Township.
I just wondered if sheriff's office was a disaster or something happened out there, we had a backup or something.
There's a rollover PSAP. The Cedar Point PSAP is going to be switched off, but that can always be turned back on to at my request, so there'll be some rollover.
And the second question is, well, I shouldn't say, I'm not going to put you in a spot of question. I still see that this is not a dispatch. These people just answer the phone and they turn it over to the people that are working and say, hey, you got a call. You got to go to it. That's not dispatch. So it's communication, answering the phone, whatever you want to call it. I get tired of hearing it called dispatch.
Thank you, Commissioner Meinter.
Mr. Jim?
Commissioner Murray?
If I don't understand the difference between what it is that is occurring here and what Commissioner Meinter thinks of as dispatch.
Oh, okay. So we went through, I know you got in a little late. So I'm going to go back to when Mr. Mears was the city commissioner, or city manager for a dollar.
Yeah.
He came up to me, he says, Mike.
Todd, Todd. Todd, Todd.
Yeah, I know. He was a bull rider. So he says, there's a guy choking in Plum Brook Country Club, and there's a fire station right down the street. Perkins Fire Station is three minutes away, and they called Huron. The dispatch goes in, dispatch, well, if you call them dispatch, the call takers get it, call Huron Fire, says, you have a person choking at Plum Brook Country Club. So they send the ambulance from Huron all the way to the country club. Now, there's an ambulance sitting right down the street, and the person died. I can go through that. I can give you so many different cases. That's still happening. We had a fire on Columbus Avenue. Luckily, Huron was at Fireland's Hospital. Huron's ambulance had a baby that was burned very bad. It was an eight-unit apartment on Columbus Avenue. We get up there, and being eight units, it took every one of us that were on the trucks to try to extinguish the fire, and taking care of that baby would have taken two or three people away. Huron just happened to pull over because they saw the smoke, thank God. But that would be an incident where if you had a dispatch, they see where the vehicles are, send the closest vehicle to where the emergency is, and they say, oh, it's all computer-aided. CAD is computer-aided dispatch, where the computer makes the mind up for you. It doesn't take, say, Chief D'Amico's on a fire. All right, when the State Theater blew down, you had a fire on Perkins Avenue. The whole street's burning, right? I mean, that's hard to do when you're on the scene of one incident and dispatch just goes, hey, you got another incident. Hey, you got another incident. That's hard to do, isn't it?
Definitely hard.
And it makes, then people will make mistakes. The computer doesn't make that many mistakes.
So Commissioner Mizer, if I understand you correctly, what you would like to see, probably what we'd all like to see, is better technology, and technology that was more coordinated, that...
I think we have the technology. I think we have a dispatch union that doesn't want to do it. And yours ain't no. I've asked, and I shouldn't say that, I asked Mr. Whoops right away. He said, man, I can't get in that political battle. And if you remember back in 2008, 2009, we started going through, you got Nusi, McClung, you got everybody fired. We were in the newspaper every day. Craig Stahl was going to ride a snowmobile out with a check to Perkins, and I don't know. It was just a mess. It's just, everybody's trying to control, posture for their own control of their own. It's so hard to get a county full of people that would agree, because everybody's trying to protect their little nest, you know. It's hard.
But, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
I don't want to put either of the chiefs on the spot.
No.
But in due course, I would like to get a little more information about what Mr. Meinter is discussing and what the impediments, assuming that Mr. Meinter is correct.
Yeah.
We'll start with that.
That's a big assumption.
I believe he's likely correct, but assuming that he's correct, I'd sort of like to get, this is something that maybe requires a little bit of research, too. I'd like to get a little bit of background in terms of whether we've had this conversation, what you think the impediments might be. I suspect that it requires a much more robust agreement among the various political entities that says, even if we have capacity, if your vehicle is closer, you're going to go there, as opposed to the mutual aid agreement that we have today. I don't know what that looks like, but in due course, not tomorrow, not this week, maybe in January, just get a little bit of an update in terms of what that looks like.
Another 10 years.
And I hadn't heard this argument before.
Chief Oliver, can you share with us, who on our team serves on the Dispatch Advisory Board?
Chief D'Amico and I all serve on the Dispatch Advisory Board.
You're both on that?
Yeah, we both would go to those meetings. I don't want to go backwards, but to some of the points that you spoke about, Commissioner Murray, a lot of those technology upgrades, I was there for. That wasn't County General Fund, that's 911 funds. Those you're paid through your cell phones, and there's different avenues with that. There's an infrastructure setup that Commissioner Meinter is talking about that would cause a lot of data entry. He's right. It's possible. It's what that staffing is going to look like to enter that data, and that's what we discussed last time. The Dispatch Advisory Board was set up to make sure that larger agencies aren't subsidizing smaller ones. The City of Sandusky was paying a price a few years ago. Through a unanimous vote from the Dispatch Advisory Board, we corrected that price, so we weren't subsidizing other agencies. When I say us, Perkins Township was paying more than their fair share as well. It's cost-effective, the way it's set up now, but there's really no rhyme or reason for the increase. That's just my belief, but that's because I've been a part of it for so long. So it's one of those things. We have to have a dispatch service. We have to be able to dispatch police and fire. What that's going to look like and how that looks, it's about getting everybody on the same page and performing the service that everyone would like to see, and that's what the Dispatch Advisory Board's there for. There's fire chiefs on it, there's police chiefs on it, obviously the sheriff, and our 911 coordinator at the sheriff's office. So we talk as a group, we make decisions as a group, and then hopefully those decisions get implemented, and that's part of the implementation process where it goes a little bit different direction sometimes.
Chief, do I understand that your advisory group makes this recommendation, but that's not the number we're looking at tonight?
It is not, no. That number came back from the county administrator through, I believe, the Board of Commissioners. I negotiate or speak directly to the sheriff. The Dispatch Advisory Board meant, I think the last time, probably six to eight months ago, the year prior when we signed the contract for 22, that was when the costs were aligned through unanimous vote from the Dispatch Advisory Board. Everybody had it all figured out, and it's sort of taken a different direction.
Okay. Nobody's pleased with a cost increase that is difficult to understand or justify, and I certainly appreciate your comments and both of your service on that advisory board. I agree, it still is of value, because it is unbelievably expensive to get into this business on our own or even grouping with another couple municipalities. But we all have to look somewhere down the road and say, how long can we take these kind of increases without really truly making an effort to find our own way? Perhaps a discussion for another time. Additional comments or questions, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Mizer.
My only question is, I know Mr. Meinter was in, you were in the initial stages of putting this together, right? And was it intended to function the way that you described? Was that the intent when everything was signed, sealed, and delivered?
Mr. Chairman, my thoughts at the time where we were cut, it was like, you go back to 2008, and we were cutting manpower like crazy, and all the technical rescues and all the OSHA and all the fire regulations are all standard, I should say. We're all putting more and more liability on you and training and trying to keep up with it. So my thought was countywide, try to approach technical rescues, ropes, diving, high angle, collapsed structure, whatever you have. And we work with Toledo, so we tried to work with a FEMA team. But a ladder truck, a million dollars. Huron's got a ladder truck, Perkins got ladder trucks, Sandusky ladder truck. I think, can't we just get a ladder truck and staff it and run it to wherever it needs to go? It's kind of crazy. All three little municipalities have a ladder truck. I mean, Sandusky absolutely needs one, but I think Perkins used one at the Stone Quarry once, and I remember Huron, I don't want to, they're going to be bad, but I don't care. Huron users had a three-story apartment building on the lake one day. So it's a million bucks. So I was trying to save money for everybody. So dispatch will not be cheaper. It'll be more expensive. If you do it the way I explained, like what I was talking about, it's going to be exponentially more expensive. The savings at that time with commissioners was, they thought of as, we get to cut a bunch of dispatchers. The savings was, in the long run, on duplicating services and efficiency and buying more equipment. Like, every department's got to buy res, I mean, I think we just sold our hazmat trailer, and, you know, and I don't know who's doing hazmat now, but I don't want to put anybody in the spot. But, so every department's probably duplicating all those training and all those equipments purchases. It's just, for a county as small as Erie County, it doesn't make sense to me. But that was my passion at the time, so...
Additional comments, Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
All I'll say is it's quite evident that Mr. Meinter is not planning to run for County Commissioner any countywide.
I've got some signs, if you like.
Jury's still out on city.
Mr. Chairman, maybe Mr. Murray ought to get a plane ticket with Mike tonight.
I love when they all call me up.
You can tell he's leaving town, can't you? Mr. Myers, you call a roll on that motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Meinter.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Meinter.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. That concludes our regular general. Turn to our city manager for his report. Mr. Orson.
Good evening, Commissioners, audience, and staff. We have four donations for the Rec Department again. The first one is from Commissioner Waddington, has donated $300 this year through payroll deductions to the Sandusky Rec Division. He would like the donation to be utilized for pickleball nets. We thank him for his continued support of the Recreation Division.
Move to accept.
Second.
Motion and a second discussion. That objection motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, that motion is approved. With our thanks to Commissioner Waddington.
The Rec Division would like to thank Carly Dawes and the Sandusky Cheerleading Team for their donation of two cases of water bottles. The water bottles will be used by our out-of-school and camp participants to stay hydrated during programming with Sandusky Rec at Mills.
Move to accept.
You have a motion for that?
Second.
Motion and a second discussion. That objection motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, that motion is approved. With our thanks.
Recreation Division received $105,432.8, representing an annual distribution from the Mylander Foundation in 2022. These funds are to be used as directed by the Sandusky City Commission for the purchase of trees and/or plantings to be planted in and/or structural improvements made to the Sandusky City Parks, Oakland Cemetery, or the Sandusky Recreation Areas. In recent years, the funds have been used to help purchase playground equipment for Huron Park and flooring for the Rec Room at 222 Megs. These new funds will be used as specified by the Distribution and Park Projects in 2023 and beyond.
Can I have a motion, gentlemen?
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
I'd simply point out, this is an annual gift that we've received from the Mylander Foundation, and it's part of a series of gifts that the Mylander Foundation makes every year. Certain percentage of the funds just automatically go to the city, the schools, Grace Episcopal Church, I think BGSU, I've forgotten some of those. Another college that Mr. Mylander attended at one point in time, and I think I'm leaving one other out, but these are automatically distributed. The fund has grown way beyond anything that Mr. Mylander would have imagined during his lifetime. He was a very frugal man. He spent very little on himself, and he would be delighted if he were here today to give the city a check for $105,000, knowing it's going to be that way every year and growing for years to come.
And I would add that Mr. Mylander would be thrilled with the use that we're making of these planting trees. He was certainly a man of the people and of nature. So I know that we've spent these dollars oftentimes in the past on recreation. Going into the use that's being directed today, I think, would certainly meet with this approval.
Last is the Recreation Division. Would like to thank Tim Perry and the team of Pizza House East for their generous donation of eight pizzas on Wednesday, December 7th, for the out-of-school program at Mills when the normal dinner wasn't available.
Have a motion, gentlemen?
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion?
Mr. Chairman, just briefly, I would like to note that my wife serves on the school board. As noted, how often Pizza House East donates pizzas to the Sandusky City Schools and the children, and they have just been incredibly generous. So a tip of the hat to them. This is just what they do all the time, and it's with the community's great thanks.
That objection, that motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, that motion is approved. With our thanks to Pizza House East.
And then for finance, the general reminder for property owners of vacant dwellings. If your dwelling is expected to remain vacant and unoccupied during the winter months, we highly recommend that you contact our office to churn off the water. This will help prevent your water lines from freezing and breaking, which would lead to costly repairs for the property owner. Customer accounting can be reached at 419-627-5893 to arrange the water being shut off. For Public Works, with much gratitude for his years of service, we are announcing the retirement of our greenhouse manager, Tom Spear, effective December 31st. For over 30 years, Tom has played an integral role in the beautification of our city by cultivating and maintaining world-class floral displays throughout Washington Park and other city properties, while also serving tirelessly as liaison to the friends of the greenhouse. Tom's hard work, vast knowledge, and dedication to making the art and science of horticulture accessible for all city residents and visitors will be greatly missed. We wish him all the best in the future. Leaf collection is right on track and will continue through December 21st. Residents can continue to drop off leaves at the Market Drive entrance to the City Service Center, which will remain open seven days a week until January 20th. Leaves must be bagged in paper bags. And then the Forest Street Division will be performing Christmas tree collection throughout the city during the week of January 9th, and will distribute further details through our website and social media. Residents may also drop off trees from January 9th to the 13th at two locations, the Shelby Street Boat Launch Overflow Parking Lot or Kiwanis Park Parking Lot. For questions regarding Christmas tree collection, please call 419-627-5884. For the Planning Department, the Public Arts and Culture Commission has selected the art pieces to be displayed in the upcoming City Hall Gallery installation. The current gallery items will be returned to their owners, and the next round is planned to be installed in the coming weeks. And last, Recreation would like to thank everyone who participated in this year's Race Before the Game. Over 100 participants walked and ran for the Buckeyes with about 15 people supporting the Wolverines. Signups are open for the seventh annual event in 2023. That concludes my report.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for our city manager?
There you are.
Now, we'll move to items of old business. Any items of old business?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
Again, I would like to thank city commission and our finance lady here for the $1,000 donation that we gave to Huron Sheriff, and then we raised quite a bit that day, too. So I'd like to say thanks again to everybody who participated. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
Just to request an update, probably should have done during the city manager's report from Mr. Klein about where we are with Columbus Ave and Communications back from the railroad. Just curious as to where we are.
Mr. Klein.
Yes, sir. Mr. President, working through the various contacts that I've been given with the railroad, we have given them our list of demands. I gave that to them several weeks ago. Unfortunately, they haven't really been coordinating real well internally about those demands, so we are meeting with them tomorrow morning. We're going to have a discussion. Got everybody involved to proceed. The original schedule that they gave us showed an opening date of April, and I told them that was completely unacceptable, asked them to get all their work done by December 9th, which was last Friday, knowing that that was a big ask, to have them cut off four and a half months off of their schedule. But they've done, they put a lot of resources into it in the last couple of weeks. They've done quite a bit of work, but we do not have the lift station ready. And one of the big concerns that we have is if there is a snow melt or a rainfall, that somebody would get trapped down there. So we want to make sure that everything's operational. Some of the equipment, we're still waiting to get in. We should have some of that equipment this week and have our contractor installing it in our lift station. We asked them to diamond grind that road. That takes off the top quarter inch. We were concerned that with some residue that could possibly be left from the wax with the slippery conditions in the winter, that we might be able to get that quarter inch off. I was down there earlier today. It actually looked a lot better than I expected it to. I didn't see any wax still on the roadway. So hopefully, in short order, and when I say short order, that's short order on the railroad's timeline, we can get that road open back up, most likely just one way. It's probably going to be unlikely that we can get two-way traffic open for quite a bit of time, just because there's still a lot of repair work that's needed throughout the area. Whether it's on the east side or west side, they'll have to take one lane down to do that work safely. We would still keep all of pedestrian traffic off of that site as well, but hopefully tomorrow I'll have a better update, and I can give you guys a better understanding at the next meeting of exactly where we're going and what we've been up to.
Mr. Klein, my understanding is that structure is sound, because I see trains going over it every day, and I hear them all night long. But what we're talking about is the concrete work that needs to take place to replace what fell into the street.
Yes, sir. Mr. President, I pushed pretty hard at the beginning to get work done on that structure, and they pushed back pretty hard as well, saying that that railroad was designed originally for four tracks and to carry their heaviest trains, and they don't have four tracks or use those heaviest trains anymore. So fortunately, the structure, the railroad structure, is sound, and the columns and everything else supporting the railroad are in good shape. A lot of the concrete walls, the abutment walls and things, the other infrastructure just to the north is damaged when the train cars went through it. One of the train cars actually landed on the roadway as well, and there's a big dent in the road that will have to be eventually removed and do some full-depth repairs. But when those trains went down, they took the railing, and they took any of the support system that would hold back any of the rocks on the tracks, on the bridge. It took all that down as well. So if we do allow cars to go through there, we need to make sure that nothing's going to fall, any of that debris and things are going to fall over, and that they have that relatively secured. The work that they have done, they did repair one wall on the eastern side, but they still have to do the wall on the western side, and our lift station is still in not good shape at all. We're missing the southeast corner of our lift station still. And that's going to be the city's responsibility with them reimbursing us for that work, but we are struggling getting design out of their contractor, that their design will dictate what we do with our design, because their wall abuts our wall, and we need theirs to go up first, so we know exactly what we're doing, so we can lay that CMU block and get the infrastructure installed back in the building.
Reality is, we probably can't really start barking at them to be completed until the moment comes when our lift station is completed and we're out of their way.
Yes.
It can certainly be going on at the same time.
I will say as well, though, that they do have temporary pumps. Right now, we're having them pump into holding tanks. We're not letting them discharge to Mills Creek. We want to make sure that everything's 100% clean. They've replaced 300 feet of force main and torn up the sidewalks to do it. I'm still not 100% sure that all of the wax material is out of our catch basins, and I'm pushing them to replace the catch basins in full, or at least line the catch basins, so any of the material that might be in the grout or any of the areas that broke away will never have a chance of getting to Mills Creek. They do have bypass pumping set up right now that's going into that tank, and we're debating whether we force them to keep that going into the tank, or whether we can let them discharge into our sanitary system, and then we'll just treat it at the wastewater treatment plant through the winter, which is our low-flow time anyway, and we'll guarantee that it gets treated properly.
Complex. Additional items of old business, Commissioner? Items of new business. Any items of new business?
Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
I'd just like to maybe invite some thought, if not some conversation tonight. There's an earthen mound that was erected on First Street, and it's in support of a development there. It turns out, we apparently don't have any ordinances that address such a thing. I object to it, because the citizens should still have a right to see through there, to see what there is and see the water beyond, and I'm disappointed and extreme by what has happened to First Street. It had held a lot of promise a couple of years ago, and now it holds a lot of boats. So I would just invite some thought as to whether or not we should have an ordinance that addresses those kinds of earthen mounds. They seem unobligatory. It had held a lot of promise a couple of years ago and now it holds a lot of boats. So I would just invite some thought as to whether or not we should have an ordinance that addresses those kinds of earthen mounds. They seem unusual to me in a, an urban area, a rural area, I could understand it, but, but not here. And then I, I think beyond that, we might want to think about a moratorium on additional boat storage on the waterfront. Our waterfront is becoming cluttered with, with the boat storage and that does not produce much revenue for us. Very few people work there and I think there are better uses of waterfront property. So I'm, I'm not asking for any action on that, just want to raise the issue and see if people have some thoughts in the weeks and months to come.
Agreed. Additional comments, Commissioners? Any items of new business? Not, we will go to the public comments on any item that pertains to city business. Share with us your name and address and your comments.
Sheriff Johnson, 1139 Fifth Street. I wanted to bring something to your attention. I think this fell through the cracks. And last September, during the Economic Development Committee, they recommended to bring to the commissioners their recommendation to rescind the $139,000 Market Street Collective grant. It never came to this table. I don't know why, but I just wanted to bring it to your attention that that was recommended by the Economic Development Department to do that. This is the Cardinal Grocery Store and they should rescind this and then when they're shovel ready to reapply for the grant. We've been holding this for four years and I know we're in between city managers and it probably fell between the cracks, but for four years, that's too long to hold for a grant. This should have probably been rejected last summer because last summer they were behind in their property taxes by $25,000. When you're behind in your property taxes, you cannot have a grant. So something has to be done with this sooner than later because we come up short and it's not fair for the rest of the people who would like to come for a grant, small businesses would like it and we're holding this up for four years now. So I'd like something done with this. Thank you.
Mr. Johnson, I can assure you that that item did not fall through the cracks. Mr. Holliday, myself and Mr. Bajali met with that developer. We gave them very specific guidelines as to keep from losing the $139,000 grant, somewhat of a last chance agreement. And that was a start date, a finish date and a letter from, from their lender indicating that they had funding to complete the project. And they indicated that they were willing to return to us prior to the end of this year, meaning two weeks from now, and share with us those two dates and the, and the letter. If they don't show up, I agree with you that, that, that $139,000 should be recirculated out there to people that are going to use it and are going to need it. Have we been patient too long? You know, hindsight's always 20/20. I've always believed that you, a bird in the hand is better than one in the bush and we had a, what we thought was a good concept, what we thought was a good developer at the time. Here we are three years later and none of us like the feeling that we're at right now. But I think this commission, speaking only for myself, but I would encourage this commission, if we don't have that criteria met before the end of this year, that we entertain the concept of moving on.
Well, I'm glad to hear that because I was concerned when I saw that they were behind $25,000 in their property taxes and they didn't pay it. They had somebody else pay it for them so they could preserve that grant. That's not right.
I, I don't know what the motivation for them, whether that was to keep, to preserve that or to get clean sheets with the county and have their, have their taxes paid. That's a relationship I don't even, I don't even want to pursue or care to pursue, but they are, you know, they're big boys and if they don't come back with the criteria that I mentioned, I will encourage this commission to move forward.
Well, if they're behind in their property taxes, they sure don't have any financing then. And in addition to this, I think at the end of the year, we need to be looking at these grants because there's some of them that are still hanging out there, that they were approved, but nothing's been done. So they need to be taken off the rolls at the end of the year and not be carried over the next year. There's several of them that still are out there yet, that that money could be put back into that fund. So I'm hoping that you can encourage the Development Department to clean up the list. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Seeing no other city residents, I'm going to presume we've run out of residents to speak.